So first public comment is for items on the agenda, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm sorry that maybe members of the public did not hear your statement, but I'm going to read my response to your statement. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Paula Johnson. I still reside here at 15 Westbourne Drive in Nashua. I want to say I come before you this evening as a former member of the Nashua Board of Education and a longstanding member in this community and excellent standing. As a person with a health issue and with a recognized medical exemption, I could not wear a mask during the COVID pandemic and thereafter. My medical exception was on file with the district. This was not recognized nor respected when I attended board meetings, and it was not at all given reasonable accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act. I was humiliated, discriminated against, and threatened with having the police remove me from the meeting because I could not wear a mask or a shield. The Board of Education addresses these matters with children in our schools, faculty, employees, and the public that comes before the Board. The Board implemented policy BE, Equitable Access to Public Meetings, because it was ordered by the Office of Civil Rights. The Office of Civil Rights, the feds, when these events occurred, directed the Board to retrain and train its members on requirements of the American Disabilities Act and New Hampshire RSA 354-A in order to comply with the important statutes. The Board and the District are also committed to navigating these issues successfully in the future for the benefits of its members, students, staff, and the residents of Nashua. Situations like this must never occur again. A public office is a public trust. Please note that I do not completely agree with the statement read by the Board President, Ms. Bishop. Going forward, we must respect the rights of persons with known disabilities and health issues. I just want to say that this was long overdue coming, and it's a shame. I hope nobody had to endure what I endured at this board meetings, coming in here basically in tears. But I came to every meeting to fight for these kids in this district and the parents who had disabilities and health issues. Thank you. I'll leave a copy of my statement so it can be put in the record. Thank you.
Okay, this brings us up to Dr. Andre's comments.
Thank you. I too want to welcome back everyone. It's the night before school. Actually, we welcomed our faculty and staff this morning. I was able to visit a few schools, and it's nice to see the joy, the anticipation, some anxiety in some faces as we always begin the new year. But this is always a time of year where we lose a little more sleep with that anticipation of welcoming everybody back. I just want to highlight a couple of things moving forward to this year and some of the goals and where the district is moving. So first of all, again, I think we're looking forward to strengthening our Tier One curriculum instruction and assessment. Over the course of the year, we'll be developing our strategic plan that hopefully is inspirational, aspirational. The last time my strategic plan was written was pre-COVID, and we saw how much that changed the way of our thinking. So when we start envisioning what our schools look like in 2030 and beyond, we want a plan that's going to be nimble enough that we can roll with the times, but also prepare our students for the future and provide 10,000 gateways of opportunity. So I'm really looking forward to engaging in our strategic plan development. We also want to make sure that we're engaging our community, so there'll be more of an effort to ensure that we're hearing family and community voice in our decisions and a lot more outreach. Within the next couple of weeks, there'll be information going out on Coffee with the Superintendent, Tea with the Superintendent, whenever we're going to be calling it, on a monthly basis, both during working hours and then after hours. So again, it'll be an opportunity for people to meet with me and have conversations on what's working and what's not working in the schools. They'll be able to go over some progress that we're making and some highlights, but also, more importantly, it'll just be an open agenda where people can talk to me about things. So I want to be more visible in that aspect. Still, looking at enhancing ELO instruction and support, that's still going to be a goal of ours. And then, you know, we was brought up in our HR committee, but always looking at how do we support our educators, our faculty, our administrators, so that we're recruiting and retaining people. So that's through building a positive culture where there's more empowerment at the building base and we're making sure that we're hearing from teachers and administrators their voice in that decision-making. So those could be some goals as we move forward. I also know there's been a doing that watching, just a transportation update. There was a message that went out again to families at 6 o'clock this evening. Just making sure that check the parent photo, the transportation routes. There's a lot of stops that have changed, so if you're anticipating a stop, we're expecting for the last seven years or eight years, and that's where you're always going, check the report because that stop may have changed. This also, we've been feeling a number of phone calls on students who may not be assigned to a bus. We've been in contact with a lot of families. A lot of these issues and full transparency, a majority of these students not assigned right now, are students who may have been in the walking zone by policy that the new system didn't pick up. So we're individually assigning students to bus routes which will change some of the current bus routes a little bit. So over the next week or so, there'll be tweaks to the schedule, so be patient with us. We will be working with every family to make sure that if they're eligible for a bus, they'll be on a bus. And moving from there, again, there's just been some situations that the software didn't pick up, whether it was crossing a major road, no sidewalks, or just some movements. So we've been receiving many emails. I just want to acknowledge thank you for bringing it to our attention. If you can give us a little grace over the next 24, 48 hours to make some changes. We want to ensure student safety, so I've been in contact with first student. So on the way home tomorrow, especially at the elementary level, the bus runs might take a little longer, which take you every year at the beginning of the year. Bus drivers will be, you know, stopped, I want to say, you know, Johnson, Crane, Daniels, Williams. You're getting off at this stop, bus two, like stop two. So it's a good way for the bus drivers to know the children's names, but also ensure that they hang off their right stop. But that actually delays the run for a couple days, so just be patient with their fines as well. So again, we want to ensure all the students have safe transportation and get off at their right stops tomorrow. So the bus drivers will be told on names as they typically do the first couple of weeks. So we are aware of the transportation problems. We're working to rectify it. We had four people, five people return all the phone calls today. We'll continue to do that tomorrow. It takes about 24 to 48 hours for those changes to reflect in the system. So again, please be patient. Email me. I'm receiving emails. I walk across the hall and I go into transportation saying, "Where are we on this?" So we did run the cross-reference of every student that was on a bus last year to everybody, every student that's assigned to a bus this year, and then if they were assigned a bus, why not? So those are the families that we're contacting. So we are moving forward. Unfortunately, it's 24 hours before school, and everyone gets nervous. So again, if we can have a little grace this week, we want to ensure everyone's safety kind of moving forward. So that's where we are in transportation. And lastly, I want to give a shout out to our Plan Ops department. I just want to read some of the things that happened over the summer that some people just don't recognize of all the hard work. So here's a couple of things that happened. So the Plan Ops coordinated the move from Elm Street to McCarthy. Building JSSBC hired a moving vendor to assist with the move. Elm Street staff organized all materials going to McCarthy in the school cafeteria. They also salvaged a lot of fixtures and dispensers to use elsewhere in the district. But mid-summer, the focal studio staff moved McCarthy, assisted with the movement of furniture and boxes. They had to learn new cleaning methods. They didn't have to do what rubberized floors in the past. Early in the summer, we advertised for all the available furnishing for Elm Street to other districts and private schools and public schools. They coordinated with any kind of transfer materials there. Movement in classroom furnishings, being Dusty and Burt Hill between construction phases, was conducted. Movement of the main nurse's office at Doctor Chris to facilitate the renovation of those spaces and installation of a new security vest. This renovation should be substantially completed within the next couple of weeks. The cleaning staffs in all district schools were busy completing the annual deep cleaning task, including stripping and waxing of the floor tiles, cleaning of the classroom furniture, cleaning of bathrooms and other spaces, and painting where needed. The ground crews spent a lot of time beautifying the school grounds. Today, schools look wonderful and improving the athletic fields. Trade crews are busy virtually at every school to follow in the highlights on top of the usual maintenance and repair functions. At Nashua High School South, the parking class, there was a kitchen renovation. We repaired doors and replaced ceramic tiles to the freezer and food service. At North, the cooling tower renovation, we placed flooring in two offices in D section, some with sprinkler. Link repairs were done in a few sections of the building. At Fairgrounds, they replaced 30 heating valves from new robotic 24 volt systems. Installed wall fans in the kitchen at Penetra. They split the OT and PT rooms into the Assistant Principal and Security Secretary Room, which later in HVAC at McCarthy, a couple of sites at McCarthy, but... They assisted in the renovation and move to close Elm Street. And then at Danvers Elementary School, they installed a new floor in the staff bathroom. Replaced carpet in the main conference room, changed floors and stair trains by the elevator. At Bicentennial, installed six new storefront windows. Five classrooms in the library, installed new seatwork. Petition walls, added interior doors for two special education classrooms. At Burt Hill, renovated game bathrooms, sinks into two bathrooms. Added suppression systems to kitchen hoods. They added kitchen equipment. Broad Street added swing sets to playground, removed all publics in five classrooms. At Charlotte, they removed and replaced playground equipment in half of the playground, as well as conducted roof and window repairs. At Doctor Chris, assisted in the renovations of the security vest. Replaced exterior doors framed by the TAF. At Fairgrounds Elementary, regular maintenance on the HVAC systems and roof repairs. At Franklin Street School, they assisted the DPW install a new sidewalk. At Black Street, replaced flooring throughout the building. At Main House School, renovated game bathroom, sinks into two bathrooms, as well as suppression systems to the kitchen hoods. At Mount Pleasant, replaced flooring in two staff bathrooms across from the office. At Love Surles, changing out 11 sinks and cabinets in 11 classrooms in the building. And at Sunset, replaced Interact Drive, so... And then Crystal Side conducted a number of trainings with the Nashville Police Department. That was in only two months, right? So I think it's really incredible just to highlight the incredible expertise and skills of the Plan Ops. We don't realize, you know, people like, "What happens in the summer?" That happens in the summer, as well as we had new teacher orientation the other day, and we had close to 100 new applicants. Tonight, we hired, I think we appointed 21. So it was an incredibly busy summer. Really excited to start this new school year and welcome back our faculty and staff and that's for sure. Thank you.
Been a busy time for you guys and for those who are still in the schools. I'll start over here with Mr. Johnson like I always do, but I just want to throw in to quote the teenagers, it should be, "Get the tea." Is that right, Warren? Did I use it correctly?
Close enough.
Did that show off my riz?
Your what?
My riz. I never said I was cool. I don't know why you guys are holding me up to a standard that I don't qualify for. Mr. Johnson.
I know, just great effort by the school administration, getting everything ready for the first day of school. It'll be very interesting to hear all the commentary about McCarthy with the first group of students starting. And good luck to all the kids tomorrow.
I would just like to welcome everyone back, especially give some props to teachers, especially those who had to move. I know what it's like to have to move and set up a classroom in the middle of the summer. And I think I also want to welcome back all students and parents. I'm reassuring myself as well as you, it's going to be okay.
Ms. Daniels-Williams.
I just want to say, welcome back to the students as well. I want to say, give a couple shout outs to Nashville Goes Back to School. Mount Pleasant had a back-to-school, school back-back drive. So I just want to say, thanks for the community partners for supporting the students as they go back to school. If anyone else needs any help, contact 211. I'm sure there's some help still available for those that are in need.
Dr. Claffey?
No comment.
Julia?
I just want to thank everyone who worked so hard to get us to this point, and I'm feeling very optimistic about the upcoming school year. So thank you to everybody.
Raymond?
No comment.
Lampier?
Just welcome back, and I'm kind of jealous because I always love school, and every September, I kind of feel bad I don't get to go back.
You can come to my classroom.
You can go volunteer for the day.
If I get to see home from work, I'll go.
All right, so moving right along. Oh, brings us up to Mr. Farley for student comments.
Good evening. It's been a while for me. I haven't been here a lot this summer. So this summer, I've had the privilege to study at St. Paul's up in Concord. I participated in the Advanced Studies Program where I at least scratched the surface of the world of law and government. So this was an incredibly intense program, which required a lot of my attention and focus. So I'm glad to be back in Nashua and enjoying the remainder of the summer. It's crazy to think that the school year is already knocking on the door. I mean, I don't go back tomorrow, but everyone else does. And so I'm really looking forward to working with you all to try and ensure that it's the best possible year for everyone, from our kindergartners to our teachers and seniors and everyone. So yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us up to Committee on Finance and Operations, so I will hand the floor over to Ms. Lampier.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with TNT for emergency InformaCast integration in an amount not to exceed $28,295. And that will come from account 91.1.99222553628. Thank you. Okay.
You read the motion, then Ms. Daniels-Williams. Seconded? Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I would need, I'm making a motion to approve the three-year contract with Allied Universal to service our security and access control system. The total cost for year one is $100,374.96, which is a 0% increase over last year. Year two is $103,386.21, and year three will be $106,487.80, and that is from account 91.1.22.262053628.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next, I'm making a motion to approve the contract with Eureka Math for school year 2425 for an amount not to exceed $233,425.77, and that's from account 91.1.99221261135.
Daniels-Williams who seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Raymond, then Mr. Claffey.
Thank you. So I have a question on this one, and that is, what are our faculty going to do until these are ordered and arrived? And arrive so that they can teach math?
They've been ordered and they have arrived.
Right, so this is paying off a previous invoice. Okay. That makes me feel better for our teachers, but not so great about our process.
Mr. Claffey?
There's just a typo on the cover page, but it's fixed on the main page.
Yeah.
I just don't know.
Dr. Andre.
$4,000 million translates into...
I saw that. See, when you saw me scoot behind, I was like, "There's an extra four."
Dr. Andre made sure I did not award them $4 million for that. Oh, do we have to vote, so right?
Yep. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I'm making a motion to approve the purchase of Foundation's materials for the 2024-25 school year in an amount not to exceed $65,426.40, and that's account 91.1.99221261135.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels-Williams. Any comments or questions?
Same question.
Same answer.
Very great.
Second versus same as the first. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And so I'm making a motion to approve the 2425 contract with Clearway High School at a cost of $633,360. And that's contract, that's account 91.1.99111053600.
I'll second it. I have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond, and comments, questions. Ms. Raymond, go ahead.
Thank you. So the contract allows for 65 spots at Clearway. How many spots do we actually have students in? How many did we finish the school year with last year, and how many do we have starting this year?
So as of Tuesday of last week, there's 42 students who are currently assigned at Clearway. We have monthly meetings with the Clearway administration and with the high schools. We hover anywhere between 45 and 55 students on a month, depending on transitions. So we've been working closely with Clearway over the last year on how do we either increase enrollment or come up with a different kind of contract.
Thank you.
And just for the record too, this is a, we approved the Clearway contract in the spring. There was a, the numbers were, the numbers from Clearway weren't correct, so it was a slight adjustment. So we worked with the Clearway administration over the summer to come up with something that meets both parties in the middle. So it's slightly higher than it was in the past, but lower than what Clearway wanted.
Right, so this is an adjustment to the, or a replacement for the motion that was made back in May or April?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Daniels-Williams?
I just wanted to know if Dr. Andre could tell the public how to get kids over to Clearway if that was an interest.
So it's a recommendation process, so it's through the high schools. It's either direct contract. It's if the high schools or the student is not feeling successful, then it's a conversation with their school counselor or the administration on what that referral will be. It's typically not with this contract. If, you know, if my child, if I want to send my child to Clearway, it was a self-referral, that's a different process. But through the high school and our contract, it's a referral process with the school counselor.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Lampier?
I just wanted to let you know that I actually asked Dr. Andre if at some point, sometime soon, he can kind of talk to us a little bit about the history of Clearway, because I don't really, I personally don't really know that much about it. I thought it would be interesting for the Board.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
My first year on the Board, we were able to have tours of Clearway in small groups, and it was, it was really interesting to see the work that they do for the students.
I have, do we vote?
Okay. Well, we've got the first aid excities. So seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
My last motion is a motion to approve the fiscal year 24 July transfer report.
No, it says, but it's really July.
Would you like June or July, Dr. Andre?
Maybe it was July.
July.
Yeah, the fiscal year 24 July transfer report. That's what it says in the book.
Okay, well the...
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Claffey.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the July transfer report? Seeing none, all the, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And it does just, I just want you to think I'm crazy. It says June right there.
It does, but July is the one that's in the packet that we reviewed.
Well, that one, I was like, "That sounds normal." Okay, I will now hand the floor over to Ms. Raymond for policy.
All right, thank you. So we had IL, but that was a typo. IL has gone over to the Curriculum Committee for further discussion and review into their queue. So the first, the first policy that I have tonight is JHC, Student Early Release Precautions. And so I move that we approve it as it is presented tonight.
Second.
Thank you. And just to speak to it a little bit, this just really clarifies the partnership between the school administration and the grownups in charge of kids about if there are any changes to how a student is normally picked up or dismissed, that both the responsible adult and the building administration have to be on the same page so that everybody is safe and everybody agrees.
Any comments or, oh, we need a second. Did you make a motion?
I didn't. Nobody seconded.
Who seconded it? You did?
Oh, no.
Sorry, searching through this. Okay, so any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, so I move that we approve policy DFGA crowdfunding.
Second.
Lampier, do you want to speak to this, Ms. Raymond?
Sure. So this policy really just clarifies some legal changes that happened about how much money can be raised through crowdfunding and small donations that requires a principal to approve, that requires the superintendent to approve, and that requires the school board to approve. And so the important thing to know, and so this is for stuff like GoFundMes, but then also there are other ways that we...
but then also, um, there are other ways that we, um, can do some crowdfunding. So the, the long and short of it is if, um, a, a school employee has used, for example, GoFundMe to raise money for a classroom project, the building principal can approve that if it is a thousand dollars or, well, if it's less than a thousand dollars. Um, if, if the amount is more than a thousand dollars, but less than twenty-five hundred dollars, it goes to the superintendent. And then if things are more than twenty-five hundred dollars, it needs to come to the board for approval. Um, and this is state law. Um, we've just really made it very clear in policy, how's, how that process has to happen so that we are properly, um, following all the laws, and if we get audited, we don't get in trouble. Um, the other thing to notice, to note on this is that if we are using crowdfunding for, um, items for the district, they become district pop- property. Um, they're not like gifts to any individual staff member. I think that covers it all. Mr. Poska, did I miss anything?
Does this support, um, goods and services that are donated?
This is about raising money only.
Just cash only?
Just cash only. So for example, if, um, you know, if a, if a teacher at the elementary level wanted to crowdfund for, um, a new carpet or, um, new like cushions or something for circle time in their classroom, that would be an example where they would put that on donors' shoes, um, people in the community would donate. And then if the carpet or whatever was less than a thousand dollars, then only the principal needs to approve it. It doesn't really involve anybody above that. But say they wanted to crowdfund, um, an entire new classroom library so that they could expand, uh, books in multiple languages, that might be more than a thousand dollars and would need the superintendent's approval. That make sense? Or if they wanted to, for example, crowdfund an entire playground that is going to cost fifteen thousand dollars, that needs to come to the board. And we already do that if, if, for those big projects, the PTO brings it to, um, finance and operations and it comes to us that way. It's just writing it down.
Yeah. No, it makes complete sense. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like, if somebody donated five thousand dollars worth of books in, as the book instead of as the money, if that was covered or not covered under this policy.
The policy that covers that is, um, public gifts and donations, which is policy, uh, KCD. Uh, which is also on here tonight, we just haven't gotten there. And we've updated that one very small to make sure that we comply with law.
Mr. Claffey?
Um, request made to the Nashua, the, and Nashua Endowment.
Like, uh, the, uh...
And, and...
The National Education Foundation.
That wouldn't fall under this, right? Those requests?
Cause it's not crowdfunding, that's a grant.
It's not crowdfunding, okay.
It might fall under public gifts and donations, but I, I think it's a grant process which is different. So, honestly, when in doubt, ask your principal, and if they're in doubt, then they need to talk to, uh, Mr. Gray over at Finance. Cause she knows all the answers. I see that she's not here to debate that, so I'm just gonna let that stand.
And her email is. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I move that we approve, wait, I scrolled too far. I move that we approve policy DGD, School District Credit Cards.
Second.
Okay, and this is just, um, the district has a very small number of credit cards to be used for purchases. A large district like ours doesn't typically buy things on credit cards. We typically issue purchase orders. I mean, that's just how large businesses operate. Um, but we do have a couple, and it is only the superintendent and the chief financial officer who really have the authority to do anything with them.
I don't have access to it either.
Frozen in the fr- in the freezer?
And just, just, I'm just gonna throw this out there, these, um, a lot of these policies went to Mr. Donovan before he retired. And he wanted to make sure that he had reviewed all of our financial policies, um, and made sure that they were buttoned up.
Any other questions or comments? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, uh, I move that we approve policy DIC, Financial Reports and Statements.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so this policy, uh, has an update, it hadn't been updated since two thousand and nine. And so, um, basically, there's two small updates. One is that severance payments, um, have to be, uh, reported on, um, an ongoing basis at the time that we usually make reports, right? Um, instead of once a quarter. You haven't done it quarterly in, I don't know, a decade. And then the other little change is that the chief operating officer or the superintendent, um, has to notify the board if there's a variance of five thousand dollars or more in anticipated revenues or expenditures, which we already do via Finance and Operations Committee. So as far as functional changes, this isn't, it's just updating the language. All right.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
I move that we approve policy DKD, Cell Phone Policy for Employees.
Second.
Okay, comments or, yeah, do you want to fill us in?
Sure. This is not, has nothing to do with students. Um, this is about, um, a program that we have where certain, um, job titles are entitled to either have a school-issued cellphone, or a stipend, um, to pay for their personal cellphone. Because they need it as part of their job, because they have to be accessible. Like superintendents and COOs and principals and anybody who might need to be available after hours.
Makes sense.
It's all, it's a policy we've had for a long time.
Mr. Claffey?
Um, I see the re- 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 re-
Redacted?
The amount hasn't changed in seven years, right?
Well, we're on the friends and family plan, so...
Well, that's why I was gonna, I know, Dr. On, you were over s- I just wonder, cause you, are you, you two are, you get the forty? Oh, sorry, that's fine. You get the f-
Personally, I would get the separate cellphone, because I would be like, this is my work phone, why are you on my personal phone?
Is that cheap? I, I just wonder, it, does that do it for you? But when you think about the amount of time that you're on your phone, doing school business versus personal time, who really owns that phone? And so is your Plan 40.
You know, I've done, I've been in districts where you, you get the, you're all, your itemized list, and you have to go down and you have to identify what's, what's a personal phone call, what's a school-related phone call. I think this process is just more streamlined. I think it, it, it's a token to, uh, uh, acknowledge the fact that you, there's a lot of work that is occurring, you know, you know, on the phone and then outside of school business hours.
But you evade, evaded my que- is forty enough?
Mrs. Poska would like more, to be quite honest.
Well, I just wonder, unlimited, you must have unlimited minutes, but it's, I'm just, I, I...
I, I've never broken it down, what the forty and what it is, and I think it's, at this point is, you know, you know, you know, when I see Dr. Andre have the two phones walking around, I'm, I'm lucky I can just hold on to one phone, so that's really one less t-...
It's streamlined, I just think. I can't believe plans are the same price they were seven years ago, and I just, was there any co- conversation about increasing?
Well, that is probably free now.
Right.
And texting's all, it's...
So not, nobody, nobody requested an increase in that stipend?
No.
I'm done.
Yeah, I mean, I think, that's okay. Mr. Poska and I kind of touched on this a little bit in the discussions about, um, as we're looking at next year's budget, like, we maybe want to look at cellphone plans and all of that stuff. But that's kind of more finance and operations hat than policy hat. And I, I am not opposed to updating the policy in the future to say, like, the reimbursement will be at a rate determined by finance and operations, or determined by contract or whatever. But for tonight, um, we were just going with what Mr. Donovan had recommended so that the policy wasn't... Because we're supposed to update policies every four years, and so a bunch of them had not been. So, I agree, I completely, I, I would make it more.
Ms. Daniels Williams?
Just concerning work-life balance, how much time after school hours are we using the phone?
He probably don't stop using it.
Yeah, we, we try to, uh, again, um, from central admin to our building principals, we want to make sure there is that work-life balance. We, you know, unless there's an absolute emergency, I might call a building principal, but we're not expecting them to respond to our emails at all crazy hours or things like that, so it's, it is in those, um, emergency situations that they need to be accessible, but we're, we're not expecting them to be on the emails. But our administrators and everybody else on this list are so dedicated, um, that they're checking their emails, but, um, they, they, in, in, to ensure that their buildings are running smoothly, but, um, we want them to have that work-life balance, and unless it's, uh, absolute emerg- emergency, we'll give them a call. But we try not to do that.
Some of the discussions that we had about using cellphones are things that have come up recently. Like, for example, there was a, a PAL track meet here once, where the kids were running and they ran through a beehive. You know, and so someone had to call the, the principal and the superintendent to come out on a Saturday morning and get, you know, the groundskeepers out to save all the kids from bees. I mean, these are the kinds of things. Or if, um, at a, at a sporting event, we have a parent who doesn't pick up their kid, someone needs to, um, be responsible for letting the athletic director know, so that they can call the parent and find out what's going on. So it's those kinds of situations, not situations where, you know, my kid forgot his homework. Does, does that make sense?
Well, we use them as the bat phone. Like, I need to get in touch with the building principal, and I'm not going through the school or email, I just, I need to call him. So it's whether it's text messages during the workday, but we try to make sure most things are during the workday or there's an emergency at night.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Sorry, I scrolled and I lost my place again. Okay. The, I move that we approve policy FA, Long Range Capital Improvements Planning.
Second.
Okay. We added quite a bit to this policy, um, and, um, we really just wanted to make it clear, kinds of the things that, um, the board would like to hear, uh, for our own, um, information and for the public. And this is stuff that, um, frequently Mr. Smith is reporting, um, and that frequently comes up at the Joint Special Building Committee. But we also would like, um, to have a little bit more transparency at the board level with some of this stuff. Um, and a lot of it is just how everything, like, how are our buildings doing and what do they need? And, um, Dr. Andre gave us a big, long list tonight. So I think as we're talking about the budget typically, this is when a lot of this would come up. Yep. That's all. This is compliant now with, um, state law, um, RSA one-nine-eight fifteen A, requires that the, um, that the school districts report all this information to the, um, Department of Education anyways, even though there is no money in the school construction grants fund still, and there hasn't been for ten years. But should there ever be money there again, the Department of Education will have our list that we send them every two years.
Daniels Williams?
Responsible for chasing after that grant.
So the, the-
The school building.
The school building, right? So, um, it would be probably Dr. Andre, or if he de- delegated it to Mr. Smith, but that account has had zero dollars in it for over ten years. So, and now, I think there's twenty-five million dollars in it going forward for the next biennium, but charter schools are allowed to apply for it as well. So, um, I would not expect to see much money coming to Nashua. There are thirty, um, separate schools that are already on the list, including some of our projects that have been done for reimbursement. But we're like halfway to two-thirds of the way down the list. But, and you can get all that right on the Department of Education's website.
It'll just be nice to be able to participate in that conversation, I think, that we've been asking. I appreciate this policy. Any other comments or questions? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alright, I move that we approve policy KCD, Public Gifts Donations.
Second.
Um, and so this policy is about, um, people who give us money or, um, things, uh, which happens actually quite a bit, because we have a very, um, generous and involved community. Um, so state law changed this year, RSA one-nine-eight twenty B, said that the superintendent may now accept, um, monetary gifts up to twenty-five hundred dollars and, um, material or equipment under five thousand dollars, um, on his own. And then he would just have to, you know, inform us, which he typically does, because we like to say thank you to people. Anything larger than that, um, like an entire playground, needs to come to finance and operations, uh, as per usual. But we have been so fortunate in Nashua with the donations that we have gotten from our community partners and businesses and families in the district.
Anybody have any other comments or questions? Seeing none, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Can we set up a process where the board is sending thank you notes for these? Like real physical thank you notes?
We'll, we'll discuss.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we did that already.
We do for presentations here.
Which, which I fell apart on the year that I was so sick, so I haven't sent any in the last year.
Shelia.
I know.
I'm just kidding.
And I was just thinking about that when you brought that up, that I need to start doing that again. It just kind of slipped my mind. I didn't, I forgot it was part of my responsibility, but I will pick up on it again.
Well, we can, we can plan accordingly, but I was kind of hoping to have thank you cards with that. How my grandmother used to have her house inked on.
No, the handwritten notice would be nice. Um, typically in the past, we would just, we would have a letter that we would send home and, like, again, out last night, the board accepted your donation, thank you very much, and we would send that out. But we can definitely change the, the format.
Add us.
Right. And I feel like with nine of us, there should be someone available to write something handwritten, because I think expressions of gratitude are really important.
Yeah, it's good for morale. Sorry, thanks. Ms. Julia, I'm not targeting you.
No. That's what I'm saying, it shouldn't just be on Ms. Julia.
Right. We can, we can figure out a process. I just don't want you to feel bad. I'm not saying anything.
No, 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 but, I mean, I am the oldest member of the board, so you have to cut me some slack. But, um, no, but when I did do it, I did it, I did it on the computer on School District Stationery. With the arthritis in my hands, my handwritten notes would not be decipherable, so I'm probably not the candidate for that.
We could have like a, a contest to see who has the best cursive penmanship.
Mine comes and goes. Ms. Daniels Williams, did you have something to say?
This, I'm just wondering if someone wanted to take it on. I wouldn't mind if Ms. Julia...
Well, that's lovely.
Sure, thank you. Great. Um, any other comments or question? Oh, no, we're gonna hold on to this. Alright, so the- My, I can't hear out of my ear right now, so if you see me tugging on it, I'm sure there's a couple.
Okay, so I move that we approve policy, wait, I've lost my place, KCDR, Procedures for Public Gifts or Donations.
Second.
Okay, um, there's really no changes to this policy. It just really outlines, um, our pol- our official stance on gifts and donations. So, um, and whether or not we, uh, should or could accept things. Um, so for example, we're not going to accept gifts that could be inappropriate or harmful to students. Nor can we, you know, accept gifts that are, you know, like a giant Dunkin' Donuts sign on the front of our building. It can't, it can't promote a particular business or product. That's, that's a lovely thought, but we can't accept it. So, um, and then we don't, um, typically do gifts to individuals, we do gifts to the district. That's it. That's it.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Oh, I should say, I know I said the Dunkin' Donuts thing. However, if one of our community partners gives us something that is educational in nature, like for example, an underwater robotics lab, we are certainly happy to do a plaque identifying, you know, where the underwater robotics lab, for example, came from. And I know, I know we've got some great automotive partners as well for the automotive program. We are happy to discuss, you know, giving credit where credit is due. Just not an advertisement.
Okay. And the last policy for second reading to vote on tonight is policy DAF, Administration of Federal Grants. And so I move that we approve it as updated.
Second.
This is really, 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 really long. But the key is, is that the federal government audited the state of New Hampshire, and they have asked every district in the state to make an update to this policy. And so we are going to do what they asked. It doesn't particularly change our process, but it needs to have this very specific language in the policy.
Any comments or questions? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Right. And then, I don't see on here, but we had a time and effort policy that I thought we were rescinding because we had included it in DAF. Are we waiting for another month to do that?
I think that should also have been part of that because policy DK was also embedded in policy DAF. So it was duplicative, so we should be coming back to, and we'll do that at the next policy meeting, we'll bring DK forward to be rescinded.
Okay, so I didn't miss it. Okay. Sorry, I just had a note to myself about it. Okay. And so we have two policies on first reading, CBI and CBI F1, which is the Superintendent Evaluation. We've been using the same form for the Superintendent Evaluation for a number of years, but every year we have to look it up again through the New Hampshire School Board Association because we never instituted it as a policy. So I recommend that next month, or next meeting we'll meet again, that we make sure that it's updated so that it matches our policies and then approve it. And that's it. Mr. Marris asked me to follow up on dress load policy, and so Mr. Poska and I will be meeting with the administrators at the building levels sometime in the next month, and people get settled to schedule a meeting with Mr. Farley and Mr. Marris about that policy.
Fantastic. Wow, lots of, lots of stuff.
We were very busy this summer.
Appreciate it. Okay, so now I'm going to hand over the floor to Mr. Claffey for curriculum and evaluation.
Thank you. The committee met last Tuesday, August 20th. I don't know whether the agenda was important or whether I was under double secret probation, but we were joined by Ms. Raymond and President Bishop, and there were no motions, no votes. We discussed, first, we discussed three policies that were referred to us by policy. We didn't talk about specific changes to the language yet, it's still in our queue, those are still in our queue, except maybe IL, I don't know about that one. But I think that some of the language in ILBA reinforced our concern about data reporting, and Dr. Andre quickly said, absolutely, what would you like to see? So we discussed maybe for the next three or four meetings this year, having presentations on data assessment curriculum. And I think the first meeting we're going to have, well, the next meeting in September, we're going to have a presentation that's high school assessment.
Correct, yep. Yep, so the secondary administration will be coming in, reviewing historical data around AP scores, SATs, graduation rate, enrollment in CTE classes, two and four-year graduation, some correlation between grades and attendance. So they've put together, or already started putting together a full presentation, and I think we're going to be really impressed on the amount of data that they collect and the successes in our building. That would be followed up by a middle school presentation, elementary, and we're hoping that we would have three presentations per level for this upcoming year.
Trying to remember what happened first. The, we had a presentation by two elementary principals, Dr. Andre, on the proposed elementary report, reporting, you don't want to call it a report card, so if you'd like to.
Yep, so Ms. T, yep, it's in your packet for this evening. So Ms. T Boom and Ms. Seroni presented reporting, an elementary reporting schedule. They've been working with a subcommittee this past year, but quite honestly, this has been a conversation going on for a number of years. When I was first in the district a couple of years ago, teachers were saying, how can we reduce the burden and some of the work of redundancy? That was in a tight frame, timeframe of parent conferences, progress report, and report cards, which was some of the same conversations going on. But it was just a lot of the redundancy. So this elementary reporting schedule is, we're hoping to increase more informal conversations with families and then limiting some of the formal. So because we feel this day and age in 2024, 25, that parents and teachers have so much data at their fingertips that we don't have to wait to report cards, we don't have to wait to progress reports in order to inform families on how their child is doing in schools. So in this reporting schedule, you can see month by month the data that we're collecting and information that will be going home. Again, especially at the elementary level, educators are so great, sending stuff home on Fridays and, or curriculum documents are saying this is the upcoming information. So we're hoping that it's more timely communication, more timely feedback with the families. And here, the big change is really that, that time around November, parent conferences and progress reports. But we're hoping, actually, we're hoping that the plan is that there's better communication before November, so that families know the progress of their, of their child. We're also, for internal accountability, we're asking classroom teachers to journal how they, how they're communicating with families, especially in the November timeframes, whether they had a parent conference, it was an email that went home, it was a telephone conversation, if parents didn't show up to a conference. Some of that is to ensure that come the spring, with saying the student is not, isn't making adequate progress, we don't want them coming back to say we've never heard from the classroom teacher. So it protects the classroom teacher a little bit, but it also ensures consistency across all the elementaries and all the grades. So then, you know, there'll be an internal aspect and ask your ex to, for the teachers to complete a simple form. But again, this is really, it's in reflection to increasing communication with parents and also lessening the burden of redundant reports, can I say the same thing at the time, the same timeframe? So I think it's a step in a good direction. One thing that we're also talking about is the eliminating of trimester one report cards. As most of you know, they have children in the, in the system, the way that the report cards are, sometimes it's, you know, half the report card says, and then it's really no information, that's all. Like, it's not applicable for that trimester, or it's some information that's, it's false, it's just not the right information to standard-based report card. So if we increase informal communication with families, then it would be looking at more relevant trimester two and trimester three report card. So those are the big changes, and I really want to thank the committee for all the work that they put into this and being able to move it forward. I think it benefits families and our educators.
Keep trying to make eye contact with this print because I know she's a elementary school teacher, and is this, would this be exciting for you?
Oh, yes, just knowing the amount of work that, that teachers put into with conferences, and it does seem really redundant. Actually, in my district, we've eliminated our, our first-term report cards. We only do mid-year and end of year. And what we've done to kind of supplement that is we've done extra conferences, but I know we're not there yet here, but it's, I, I do find, as long as you've got good parent communication, it's not necessary to do three report. It's just so much work, it's so much work for the teachers. So to, to take something off of their plate is really great.
Go. Daniels Williams?
I'm thankful that it's taking work off the teachers' plates and stuff. I just want to know what happens if you don't, since it's not mandatory for the teachers to continue to reach out to the parents, if they don't get a response to those emails, to those letters, to those things sent home in the backpack, what happens then? Because they won't hear from the school till December.
Just clarify the concern, what happens to whom? The teacher or the parent?
The student. So what we're doing, my, I guess my question or my version to taking away the report card, which I know is not my choi, my choice or my responsibility, my thing is, they won't hear, parents won't, won't hear from the teachers till December unless it's by the student conference, or it's by the letters, an email, or whatever. How about if those things don't get through to the parents and the teachers, we, we talked about it, doesn't have a responsibility to reach out past that?
So I, I think our educators are incredible, so if a family is not receiving information, if they can, you know, contact the building principal as soon as, at that point, but our educators reach out consistently. But if there's an issue in breaking down our communication, reach out to the building principal, and we will address it that way. But again, I can't thank our educators enough and their dedication, but if there are issues that should arise, contact the building principal. I hate to say it, but sometimes, you know, parents and guardians aren't looking at report cards either. This system hopefully increases that informal communication, so by the end of September, October, parents have, and guardians have a real clear understanding of where their child may be. But if they don't receive anything, contact the building principal and start the conversations.
But that was my thing, they won't know they're missing anything till December.
Well, I, I think our educators reach out, especially at the elementary level, send home a lot of information if there's something missing, and they, they probably should know by like September 15th that they haven't received anything, so it wouldn't wait till December.
Are they, just a, just a follow-up on Ms. Daniels Williams' question, are they receiving the December report cards in a different fashion than they would be the progress reports, the family reaching out? Like, if they're not receiving emails or phone calls or letters or backpacks home, there's no different way that they're getting their report cards, right?
So not, so in November, which was a typical, like trimester one or thereabouts, they should be either having a conference with the teacher that they'll get the update, they should be getting a phone, a phone call, or they should get a narrative progress report on their child's status. So there will be something formal in November, it's just not in a traditional report card fashion.
Raymond?
So I, I'm reading the chart, and it says that in September, there's a Dables, which is the, Dables, sorry, Dables, the dyslexia screener, and then there's a phonics screener in October, and an amplify math update in October. Do we have the family engagement coordinators for every elementary school now so that they're able to help bridge the gap with our families who English isn't their first language? Because I'm just trying to think of, I don't even know how you say dyslexia in other languages, you know, much less have that communication.
Yes, there's liaison in every, every school.
Every school, oh, fantastic. Another kudos to Mr. Bowles and his people.
If anybody needs electronic equipment, United Way is working on their digital equity, so families, if they need in-home smartphones, laptops, or tablets, they have a surplus of stuff. You can go down to the United Way and pick one up for your family, along with some assistance with a Wi-Fi hotspot.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask, do they have the hotspots too? Because I know Comcast got rid of that program.
Yeah. Yeah, the $10, if you're unmedicated. No. Thank you. Being worked on. Okay, well, thank you for that update, Mr. Claffey. And I didn't show up to like, check you out. I literally was dropping my kid off at the end, and I had nothing else to do, and I saw all my friends' cars, and I was like, I'm going to come in and hang out, I have nothing else to do. And then everyone was here, so sorry if I put added pressure on you.
I feel bad now that I went, right? But I only went so that I could like hand them policies and be like, policy doesn't know what to do with this, here.
I was like, what am I going to do with myself in the next three hours?
I had asked Mrs. Raymond to come because I had a conflict that night and wasn't able to be at that. So she had told me she would be happy to be here, so you can blame it on me.
Well, that doesn't explain the president's presence, but-
She was judging you, she was judging you, Mr. Claffey.
This is fun for me.
All right.
Okay. Let's go back to the agenda. We are now on to Committee on Human Resources. I will hand the floor over to Ms. Jillio.
I'm looking for a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any comments or questions? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We had a few things that happened tonight. First of all, we began with an administrative recommendation for the assistant principal at Burchell Elementary School. So the recommendation was, and we approved it, to elect Jillian Cook to the position of assistant principal at Burchell Elementary School, effective September 1st, 2024, at an annual salary of $81,688. And we approved that recommendation, and we got a chance to meet with her and her principal and ask questions, and we recommend that the total, the whole board approves that.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was able to sit in the audience for that, that sounds, she sounds amazing. We're certainly stacking our deck with awesome people, I'm excited. Any other comments or questions?
No, I'm just delighted that, once again, we are promoting, we're recognizing and promoting from within, and balancing that with the needs of the district, which is not always easy.
Eight wire. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Dr. Andre, would you like to speak about the other assistant principals that you talked about earlier?
Yep, so earlier we made the HR Subcommittee aware that we will be moving forward with our recommendation in, in December for an assistant principal at Amherst Elementary School. We introduced the community to Marissa Gautier, so she's completing some of her certification requirements right now, that's why we're not recommending her tonight. But through the interview process, she was the number one candidate, should be a great fit at Amherst Elementary School. And again, so we're not doing a formal recommendation tonight, but we want the community to be aware, we do have a candidate, we have a plan in place to support Amherst Elementary School and the district during this transition. But this is another hire that's coming from within the school district, she's been with us for eight years as a special educator- hire that's coming from within the school district. She's been with us for eight years as a special educator at Fairgrounds Elementary School. And then this past year is an elementary special education coordinator. And both her and Gillian have been incredibly successful in leading and supporting students. So really happy with these two recommendations. But Marissa will come to you formally in December for the official appointment, but we want the community to be aware that we do have a plan in place to support that school.
Thank you, Dr. Andrade. Also, we had a report, as we do always, from Mr. Bowes, who's the head of HR. And I won't read all the details of his report. However, and amazingly, in the next motion we're going to make is to approve the hiring of 41 new staff. His department has worked overtime this summer, but we still have openings. So people out there who are still interested, we have 15 elementary teaching opens, openings, six at middle school, eight at high school. And along with others, we're looking for school psychologists and we need almost 67 pairs. So anyone who's out there and is thinking, gee, I think I might like to work for the National please contact our HR department. Oh, that was, that was that. And then, so now we need to, we're recommending to you that we approve the personnel recommendations made earlier tonight for 41, the hiring of 41 new staff members.
Second.
That Ms. Raymond seconded that? Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Except yay.
Wow. Conditionally yay for coming to Nashua, but also I'm significantly concerned about our special education needs.
I'll celebrate what we have for right now.
Right. And I don't think that this is a Nashua issue. I've been, you know, every night I turn on the news and Portland, Maine was just on TV. Like everywhere is really struggling to find educators. Private and charter schools are also struggling to find educators. So.
Celebrate teachers all the time. Right?
Yes.
Wonderful job to have.
I shouldn't laugh so much. Punchy. I've worked in my classroom all day today.
Tired, wonderful teachers. So all those in favor of approving, approving the personnel recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. That's it from HR.
Brings us up to new business, the MOU with Greater Nashua.
So we're just looking for, this is for full transparency, Greater Nashua has been in our schools for a number of years. So we just want to renew the MOU with them. The MOU, there's no financial cost to the district. The Greater Greater National Mental Health works directly with families on the cost and the reimbursement. So we just, as part of the MOU, agree to give them some space in the district, help them out with some referrals, access to wifi in that aspect of it. But it's, as we know, as we just heard from HR, it's hard always staffing and supporting our students. It's great to have some great community partners who provide additional support. So I'm looking for a recommendation to, again, renew this MOU with them in moving forward in support of our students.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Prin. Comments, questions, Ms. Raymond?
I just want to make sure that I have a complete understanding of our relationship with Greater Nashua Mental Health. This is, so this is an agency where the parent or guardian has made an arrangement with them to provide mental health services for their child. And we are allowing them to use our space because that's what works best for the family's schedule, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are we making referrals or doing any screenings?
We do not do any screenings, but there might be a referral that may come through, but it's very, very limited. It's, it's definitely between Greater National Mental Health and, and the families.
So we're not asking them to meet with students. It is, the parent is being contacting with Greater National Mental Health and we are just giving them a location to do that.
Correct.
That's fantastic.
It's a good partnership. Ms. Lamphier?
I was just wondering if there's any, like which classes would the children typically be taken out of?
So we try to avoid some of the tier one classes. So, but it's a good, it's not a concrete answer on when it happens. So it's, you know, a conversation between the clinician and the, and the family. So when's the best time? Or when is that clinician in the building? Because they're not always in the building all hours. So we try to have it as least impactful as, as necessary.
Since they work for Greater Nashua Mental Health and not for the Nashua school system, we don't do any background checks or anything. The Greater Nashua Mental Health does all that.
Yes, in there, so they are responsible for the background check and we work with them to ensure that every employee has a background check before they come in.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If they're, they have certain standards in order for them to maintain their licenses anyway. So you can't have certain felonies or misdemeanors on your record at a billable service.
And just in general, no matter who we contract, we go through a background check, whether it's hobby, harem, construction crews, plumbing crews that come in, everyone needs to have a background check.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us up to our second public comment. Oh, you have a liaison report. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gilio.
Okay. The simple, the simple one is just, as Dr. Andrade talked about everything that happened this summer, I don't think I need to reiterate what we talked about at the JSSBC meeting, but that everything is going well. All projects are going well. We know how happy we are with McCarthy opening tomorrow. They're making great progress on Penachuck with the dehumidification system. And they've done a lot of work on Burchill and Main Dunstable. And they're going to be in good shape for tomorrow. And Dr. Crisp is still working on the security vestibule, but they hope to return all of that space back to the school by October. And everything is just looking great. So anyway, that's my report.
Hey. So now we're up to second public comment period. Folks? Oh, just one. Marian McHugh.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank you all for your service to the community. I really appreciate the time and effort that you all put in. Some of my point was, my issue was already addressed by Dr. Andrade, I think. I work with a family that lives in Monty Ham Manor. I don't know if you all are familiar with Monty Ham Manor. Last week, when I tried to get the bus information for her, there was none for her third grader to go to Ledgestreet. And I found out after that that she's out of the, she's within the mile. It's point eight, a tenth of a mile. And I've driven down that street with them many times and I don't consider it a safe area for a perhaps kindergartner to walk to school or back. And so I was hopeful, I mean, I actually did get an email at 616 tonight saying they're still working on transportation issues. So I don't know if Monty Ham Manor is one of them, but that's an area with a lot of kids and a lot of them don't have consistent transportation. So I was really hopeful that maybe a bus could go in there, pick them all up, bring them home at the end of the day. So that, that was my issue. And I don't know how else to address it. I did write an email and make some calls last week and then I was away for the week. I just got back last night. So I don't know whether, maybe Dr. Andrade, do you know if Monty Ham Manor?
We typically don't respond, but that is on our radar to make that, those adjustments.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Raymond?
I have a question about that because last year at Nashua Goes Back to School, the Safe Routes to School program was there and they had a booth. And part of that booth was a safe route to school from Monty Ham Manor to Ledgestreet. Like they had mapped out a path and they had like a, a plan, which I thought had gone into place for this past school year.
So again, we, as more families are moving in there, we're just evaluating how many families are in there or what those alternatives are. So we want, we want to make sure that every student is getting to school safely.
And I wonder with the intersection getting more busy over there, it's.
Right. It was interesting because they, but I remember they had a booth and they had like maps and they were working with families and working with Mr. Miller. But I don't, I don't remember all the details. No, it's gone.
Claffey?
While we're on the subject of buses, media's talked about the potential for a strike and I was just wondering, can a parent even prepare for this? No matter what kind of communication is set up?
So our communication with for our student, there is no impending strike right now. Over the next couple of days, there, for our student and we'll be going back to the table September 10th and 11th. And hopefully they'll be able to complete negotiations at that time. So over the next two weeks, there should be no strikes, no interference with any schools from a strike or labor perspective. So we'll keep you posted when we learn more. But for our student, it's been great in the communications ensuring us that the buses will be rolling tomorrow. Maybe a couple of minutes late, but they will be rolling.
So the authorization to strike vote does not mean there's going to be a strike.
Correct.
Okay. So this brings us up to board member comments. I'll start over with Mr. Johnson again. Sorry.
I'm just, good luck to all the kids tomorrow. Good luck to all the teachers and staff. It's exciting to be starting a new school year already. It seems like it's come up too fast as we were just doing graduation and now we're starting school again. So I wish them all best of luck.
Same. I'd like to wish everybody a great back to school tomorrow.
Same. Wish everyone a safe first day of school, whether it be today or tomorrow. I mean, tomorrow or the next day. I'm just very thankful for another year of school.
Claffey?
I use my time on the bus.
Hey, Ms. Gilio?
Yeah, I'm excited for everyone for tomorrow, for the students, for the staff, for everyone who makes this happen. And I just have a really good feeling that tomorrow's going to be a great day.
Raymond? Well, those are also very nice. So I have two small things that are related to each other. And there is an increased attention being paid to restraint and seclusion. And I know Nashua updated our policy and updated our reporting process last year. Next week on Wednesday, the state study committee is meeting to talk about restraint and seclusion. And then on September 23rd, up at the Bank of New Hampshire stage, Dr. Ross Green is coming. And he's having a, a panel and a showing of a movie about restraint and, and seclusion and kind of best practices. So I just wanted to make the board aware of it. First come, first served, but the tickets are free if people are interested. I think you just have to Google it. And Dr. Ross Green is really the, like the leading expert. And I understand that he might be coming to Nashua during this school year to provide some training to our staff as well. So I'm just really excited about starting the year off in a positive learning way. So.
He, he's written some really great books too for, about kids. Yeah.
We've, we've been partnering with them for a number of years. So it's fantastic.
Yay.
Beer?
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Andrade and Mr. Poska and all the people at Central Office because I know it was summertime, but I feel like you guys were always there, always here and always answering any questions or emails or anything that we had. So, so, you know, we, we appreciate you being around when everyone else was on vacation. Thanks.
Yeah, there is no lag in time for responses to my ridiculous questions and emails. Yes, turn that, the Gen phone off. Yes, I want to welcome everybody back to school as well. I'm really excited for this next year. I know a lot of us have kids going back to school tomorrow too. And I don't know if you guys are getting the 17 text messages about where are the new pens at, mom? But I am. But I also wanted to say hi, Jimmy. He's up here visiting us. And I would be remiss to say that we miss you and we're so happy you're here and you gave us so many years of dedicated service. And I'm glad you're here and I can't wait to give you a hug. So with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I motion, we adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Ms. Gilio. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are out at, at 7:39.